Hello, everyone. Welcome to all of you who are listening to this forum. My name is J.P. Persall, a member of the League, and I will be the moderator for tonight's League of Women Voters Clallam County Candidates Forum, featuring five candidates for the position of Port Angeles City Council Positions One and Four. I would like to thank these candidates for taking their time to participate in this forum tonight. Position One candidates are Gilbert Hall, James Taylor, Latricia Suggs. Position Four candidates are Ralph Davison, Mimi Smith Dvorak, and Kate Dexter. All the candidates agreed to participate in tonight's forum, but as of this time, we have not heard from candidate Gilbert Hall. Despite our efforts these last thirty minutes to reach candidate Hall, the rules that govern League of Women Voters Candidate Forums do not allow us to conduct what are known as "empty-chair debates", which is a forum in which only one candidate for contested position is present. Members of the audience, we appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening. Prior to this evening, we had every reason to leave.
Excuse me, I am here. I am under the two war you just took off my video when I was trying to do it. I've been here for thirty minutes and nobody's been here, so.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, that, I, yeah.
Okay.
I've been trying to, I'm on somebody else's laptop because I'm not at home, wasn't able to be at home.
Okay, okay, well, we'll continue on and hear from you. Oh, there you are, we've got you. Okay, then everybody, forget what I just said about Gilbert Hall. He is with us. We have all six candidates for Position One and Position Four for the Port Angeles City Council. Voting is the cornerstone of our democracy, and we appreciate the time you are taking to listen tonight. There are many volunteers working to keep this event running as smoothly as possible, and I'm grateful to all of them, and especially to Sarah from the North Olympic Library System. We are recording this forum, and within the next few days, we will be posting a link to it on the League of Women Voters Clallam County website, which is L W V C L I dot org. C L A dot org. It will also be on our Facebook page. Over the past months, we've received thoughtful questions from the community, so the questions you hear tonight are the community questions, and we thank everyone who took the time to submit them. In many cases, multiple people submitted similar questions, and we did our best to combine the questions in a way that allows us to cover as many questions as possible on a wide range of topics in the time we have this evening. Before we begin this forum, we made sure that all the candidates were able to see our timer, and now would like to put that to use. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement in ballot order. After that, we will move to the question portion, where each candidate will have ninety seconds to answer. We will alternate on who will answer first. At the end of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement in reverse ballot order. We will now hear each candidate's opening statement. Please tell us why you are running for the Port Angeles City Council, Position One, what your qualifications are for serving, and what your goals are while in office, including your top three priorities. We will hear from Position One candidates. And Gilbert Hall, you will go first and have two minutes.
All right, just say when.
You can go.
Good afternoon, League of Women Voters and all the fellow candidates here. My name is Gilbert Hall. I'm a thirty-year veteran of the United States Coast Guard. I was stationed here from ninety-four through ninety-eight. Both my daughters were born here at the Olympic Memorial. In 2015, my daughter graduated from college and I retired. She got a scholarship to Wazoo, and I said, "You know where I'm going? I'm moving back to Port Angeles." I just loved it up here. About two and a half years ago, I married a Port Angeles native. She's like third-generation Port Angeles, and we travel all around the Northwest, and we just, we love this place. We always brag about Port Angeles, but it just seems to be kind of tired here, and it lacks luster, and it just, it just worn out. So I started watching the city council meetings about the end of last year, and it just, they seemed confusing and frustrating. I'm not a politician, so I didn't understand what it was. And so I looked into what's required of being a city council member. It said nonpartisan was like one of the first things, and that is not what I was seeing on this city council. I was just really kind of disappointed with the partisanship of the city council. And so it really frustrated me, and I just was like, well, maybe, I'm not one to complain, or bitch, should I say? Pardon the terminology. I want to provide solutions, so I decided to run for city council. I'm a retired chief warrant officer. At the time I retired, I was the most senior sixty-five, which is those orange helicopter warrant officer in the Coast Guard. I managed a nineteen-million-dollar contract all by myself with two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar part inventory. Over, wow, geez, I'm already done. Well, the two minutes goes by quicker than you think, and yeah, I feel qualified, I could do anything that this council requires. So, two minutes, you should probably try giving us five, that would be awesome.
Okay, James Taylor, you now have two minutes.
Okay, so I'm James Taylor. I am not born and raised here. I'm from Coos Bay, and believe it or not, Coos Bay and Port Angeles are very similar. Logging industries, fisheries. Went through the economic decline when all the trees got cut in the seventies and eighties. Town went through a real depressed period. Graduated, went to college, graduated, and ended up spending thirty-five years traveling around the U.S. Installing control systems for factories. So then, you know, we came, one of my stops was Bellingham, and one of our favorite things to do was to catch the ferry out of Anacortes and come over to Crescent Lake. And then, you know, as you expand, you go to Ozette Lake, and, you know, you go up to the mountains, and we ended up here. In, in 2013, my wife and I were on one of our road trips, drove by, on our way to Safeway, drove by a house that had a great view, had a great view of the mountains, had a pretty good view of the water, and we purchased. My involvement previous was on planning commission, and the reason I was on planning commission was my frustrated, my frustration with getting permits and having the city tell you, "You can do this and you can't do that." And so we went to build an art studio at our place, and the city kept insisting that we were creating a business. They asked us why we wanted a toilet in our, in our art studio. And my wife, who had been in a car wreck, just got so frustrated that we didn't build the art studio. But I lived kind of close to Lindsay, and I said, you know, "This isn't fair, the way CED treats people just trying to accomplish something here." So, you know, on planning.
Mr. Taylor, you've run out of time, and I'm gonna have to stop you and go to Latricia Suggs, you now have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Latricia Suggs, running for Position One on City Council. I was appointed to City Council in 2020 and then elected to City Council. I'm the first Native American enrolled tribal citizen to serve on City Council for Port Angeles since its inception. I bring twenty-three, twenty-four years of experience working in environmental policy and planning. I worked with Lower Elwa Clallam Tribe. I currently work with James Sound's Clallam Tribe as the Restoration Planner. I bring that intergenerational knowledge that my opponents don't have. I've lived here in Port Angeles for fifty-plus years. I am familiar with all the ups and downs, and I'm familiar with how our wonderful community has changed. We all live here for a reason. We live here because we love it. I'm on City Council because I love where I live. I love my community. We are a terrific community, and we always stand up for what's right in our community and what is needed. Now, being on City Council, it's not easy, it's hard. A lot of times, you have to give and take. It's not just all one way or the other. But on City Council, I want to maintain that we have a healthy budget, that we advocate. One of the things that I think is important is that we advocate for our truck route on Highway 101 and Tom Water, that we continue to work with the port to seek funding for that. We need to get truck traffic off of downtown Port Angeles. We also need to continue to expand our affordable housing opportunities, and we need to continue to work with our state and federal legislatures on infrastructure and policy advocacy that meets the needs of our community. Thank you.
Now, we will hear from Position Four candidates. Please tell us why you are running for the Port Angeles City Council, Position Four, what your qualifications are for serving, and what your goals are while in office, including your top three priorities. Ralph Davison, you will go first, and you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, my name's Ralph Davison. I have been born and raised in Clallam County. I was born in Port Angeles and have grown up between here and near Bay, being a member of the Makaw tribe. So if I'm elected, I'd be the second tribal member on the council. The reason I'm running for City Council is because it seemed as though the City Council was hyper-focused on short-term rentals, and the legislature directed towards those negatively impacted a couple of people that were chaperones for groups that I was a part of when I was a kid. So it was, I know it was a goal in order to help improve housing stock, but it made, it caused one person to have medical issues, and the other, the other couple, they just shut down theirs entirely. I see a lot of people on Facebook complain about the council on Facebook all the time, but no matter who's there, someone's gonna complain in one way or another. My priorities, if elected, would be to be more shrewd when it comes to expenditures. We have one-hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars in the budget for this year, and at the most recent meeting, it felt like we quickly approved some things for public works, where you could go, "Why are we going for the 2025 model on this given piece of equipment, rather than, you know, maybe 2020 at much less would be okay?" And I'll just call it there.
Mimi Smith Dvorak, you now have two minutes.
There, I've unmuted. Hi, my name is Mimi Smith Dvorak. I've also been known as Merrily, because my mother did that to me, and I'm not sure why. I hate that name. I lived in Port Angeles since 1993. I've gone to City Council meetings the entire time, and before that, I went to City Council meetings since I was a teenager. I've always been interested in local government. In my spare time, when I have insomnia, I do things like I read the entire Port Angeles City Archive all the minutes, the ordinances and the contracts. I am the owner of a dog kennel, a publishing company, a podcast studio in Port Angeles. I'm the author of a seven-hundred-and-fifty-page, single-subject cookbook called Too Many Eggs. I write two different Substack columns. Mimi Smith Dvorak is actually for my cookbook, and Merrily Smith, which is for this election. I have been an entrepreneur for decades. My adventures include, I owned a deli in Port Angeles, and I also started the Port Angeles Community Market. I was a partner in a software distribution company. I did, I was a producer of comedy shows and large events. I designed marketing and ad campaigns for many of the early software companies. I am completely pro-business. I think that we don't do enough for our businesses. I don't think that we support our entrepreneurs, and I absolutely know that we aren't handling our budget well. My entire frustration with the council is that they aren't, they don't listen to the people, and I think that they've done a lot of damage to our economy with some of these short-sighted measures that they've done. I really believe in building community, and I think that everyone should be included. Thank you.
Kate Dexter, you now have two minutes.
All right, thank you. I've been honored to serve the people of Port Angeles on the City Council for almost eight years, six of those as mayor. Well, this is the sixth year. I've worked closely with community leaders, staff, and fellow council members to pass legislation that addresses our city's most pressing needs. I'm especially proud of the work that we've done to reduce barriers to constructing affordable housing and supporting our most vulnerable community members with programs like Rediscovery and the creation of the Community Paramedicine Program. While we continue to make progress in these critical areas, our city faces new challenges that require thoughtful, steadfast, and experienced leadership. That experience is more important than ever as we work with dwindling state resources and uncertain federal support. And I'm no stranger to a challenge. During my first term as mayor, we successfully navigated a global pandemic, working with individuals and local businesses to pass utility bill relief and distributing ARPA funds. I'm looking forward to continuing my record of leadership, supporting our community partners, nonprofits, first responders, local Coast Guard members, and continuing our city-to-city relationship with Victoria. In my next term, I will focus on supporting nonprofits and the private sector to increase housing options, enhancing our economic development by leveraging our region's unique resources, responding to climate change by safeguarding our water and diversifying our electrical grid, supporting public safety by ensuring Port Angeles is included in the one-hundred-million-dollar Public Safety Grant, and continuing of infrastructure improvements. While we have made significant progress, there are real challenges ahead in all of these areas, especially as we navigate the changing federal landscape and the potential for other federal policy impacts. I'm committed to working with community partners so that together we can implement meaningful solutions to move our community forward. I was born and raised in Washington State, and I live here with my two sons. I have a graduate degree in public administration from the University of Washington and work as the Clinical Outreach and Accreditation Coordinator in the nursing program at Peninsula College. I'm passionate about municipal government, ensuring that everyone has a voice and feels respected and valued in our government, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. We will now begin the questions portion of this forum. The next group of questions are about city development. First question is, "Is revitalization of the downtown core an issue of importance to you? And if so, what actions or policies would you, as a city council member, pursue to work towards this goal?" We'll start with Position One candidates, and you will each have ninety seconds. So Gilbert Hall, you will have ninety seconds.
As I stated before, I'm not quite as politically savvy as the two incumbents that are there, because they've been in the position. Yet the revitalization of the downtown core, I'm assuming you mean downtown. As I stated kind of at the start, it's just kind of become unwelcoming. It's just not as warm and friendly to businesses. There's a lot of vacated businesses that are just sitting there empty. And let's say you're a traveler that comes through Port Angeles to go to the Coho or does the loop, something that, something to that effect. You don't want to come back. We need to bring those visitors back. So we have to make it more welcoming. When you travel through Port Townsend or you travel through Squim, there is such a welcoming thing that brings money, brings visitors to the businesses, which is in town, which we rely on. And that, to me, is what, if you're talking about the core downtown, it just needs to be more welcoming, more thrive. Nobody wants to come back because it's just, it just seems like we're not taking care of the properties that we have that are vacant. That's about it.
Okay. James Taylor, you now have ninety seconds.
So before I start, I don't have a camera. I don't have the clock. So last time I overtalked when there was no clock. But I guess since I don't have a clock this time either. It's thirty percent of the businesses downtown that are empty. But as you come into the downtown from the Coho Ferry, the first thing you see is a giant empty lot. And that empty lot became empty because City Council and the city didn't write a good contract that said, "Hey, you have to develop or we're not going to transfer this property to the tribe." And so as you look at that giant empty lot, it was the Downtown Association that went out there and weeded it. So it was even full of weeds. But we have to, we have to have a viable downtown. One of the things we could do is quit raising business fees. We could quit raising building fees. Earlier, it was stated, "Oh, we're proud of our low-income housing program, but they really raised the fees on everything else." The city has raised fees a hundred percent on, on buildings, on buildings that aren't single-family, that aren't the multiplexes that they desire. These, these businesses can only thrive if we have an attractive downtown. I agree with Gilbert. Downtown is looking pretty funky, and that giant empty lot in the middle downtown doesn't really help our appearance at all.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, you're right on time.
No one remembers that.
Latricia Suggs, you now have ninety seconds.
I think one of the things that will, I would continue to do is support the Elevate PA, working with Chamber of Commerce and the folks downtown to find solutions that meet the downtown business owners. And that's what Elevate PA has done, is it has coordinated and provides kind of a central person to lift up their voice and focus on the needs of downtown. One of the other things that the city has done is we've reestablished the downtown officer that is, that patrols downtown, works with the business owners. This was a, something that was brought to us by the downtown business owners, and we did work with them. The other things that we are doing is, again, that when you come down on Front Street, is cleaning up the vista, the view as you're, as you're coming in, getting rid of the noxious weeds, again, planting, creating, planting trees that fit the corridor downtown that aren't going to get too tall, but continuing to work with downtown business owners. And I'd have to disagree. I mean, I was driving through downtown, and I really think I only saw about three or four empty buildings, which was the old Angeles furniture store that's empty, and then another Budget Tapes store that's empty in Bank of America. So I think what we're doing is, is working. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's working.
Thank you. Kate Dexter, you now have ninety seconds.
Sorry, my unmute didn't work. I just didn't hit the right spot. I'll start over. I certainly support the revitalization of downtown and think, oh, there's a lot of things to be given right now to the waterfront district, which is the, the evolution of the Elevate PA. And I think the council was wise to agree to give the Parking and Business Improvement Area funds to the waterfront district to use for their, their work. They are going to be, starting by my understanding, a Main Street program, and I think the council is really interested in hearing more about that. I certainly support that as an option. I was recently, I'm on the MRSC board and was just at a meeting and learned that they are going to be doing a specific training and having materials available for downtown revitalization, and they're a great organization with lots of good resources, so I think we should certainly tap that. One of the other things I, I think I would like to see that has been done in other communities is we would need to do something in terms of a vacant building inventory, understanding who the owners are of the buildings that are vacant downtown, and partner with the city to, or with an inspector to figure out what needs to be done to bring it up to code, so someone would know what that would cost, do an open house for people to go see, and then as a way to fill those spaces, maybe temporarily, where owners are willing, do allow pop-ups during certain times of year to give people an opportunity for their business ideas.
Ralph Davison, you now have ninety seconds. Unmute?
There we go, now I'm unmuted.
Okay.
So, um, it's actually quite nice that I talked to Mark Abscher two days ago, it turns out, with this question. One thing I found out in talking with him is the distinction between, okay, I should start that over a little bit. So there's the Port Angeles Waterfront District, which used to be the Downtown Association. They are like an HOA for the downtown. So in the circumstance of like the Monkeys trailer that went up, and what he was recalling was that the City Council was trying to help him along, but then the waterfront district has other rules in place. And it seems like increasing communication lines between the two entities would really help new business owners or locations start up a lot better. Otherwise, the down pound is a lot more alive than when I was in high school. So it is nice that way. And in regards to the empty lot by the ferry, I know that before, they wanted to get, like, my understanding is there was supposed to be a hotel there, but then they were stymied by the Department of Ecology. And, I mean, my words aren't coming out, and we're out of time.
Mimi Smith Dvorak, you have ninety seconds.
Okay, well, I speak from experience. Port Angeles is not business-friendly. You know, passing everyone off, saying, "Oh, work with this group, work with that group," does not fix the problem that we started with a business license, which was a good idea, but it was, it's a hundred and ninety dollars. That's insane for a small business. You know, the city does not understand or listen to the needs of entrepreneurs. Small businesses are a major economic driver of job creation. They make up ninety-two percent of all businesses in this country. It's how we pulled ourselves out of the 1933 Depression. So what Port Angeles needs to do is own the problem. We need to build a strong brand to showcase how unique we are. This doesn't happen by hiring out-of-state marketing. We need to spend, we can't spend hundreds of thousand dollars on marketing by hiring people outside the community, and we can't let a city employee, a government cog, write an RFP for marketing. We need to shop locally for marketing. We need to, where's our kids? You know, how come we don't have a cadre of kids to run our social media? You know, they could flood social media with, with homegrown prompts, you know, prompts on AI, graphic arts, influencer programs, contests, and they could even earn money. How come we don't have any geocaching? We need to really think about what we can do to make ourselves more attractive and do it. We have to shop locally for marketing.
Now we'll move on to question two. Which of the elements of the draft City Comprehensive Plan is the most critical to the future of Port Angeles? The elements are land use, housing, economic development, parks and recreation, conservation, climate resiliency, transportation, capital facilities, and utilities. Which of the elements in the draft City Comprehensive Plan is the most critical to the future of Port Angeles? Position Four candidates, you will have ninety seconds. Ralph Davison, you can go first. You have ninety seconds.
So, economic development seems like... So economic development seems like the way to go. If you have more businesses that are operating more effectively, and especially if they're selling wares to other entities within city limits, that's more sales tax, which generates more revenue for the city, which then allows us to pay for any other aspects. Um, housing obviously is something we'd like a lot. Um, also a part of my conversation with the Chamber of Commerce, it sounds like there's, um, a, someone called Eric Dupar that's trying to make a, a condominium that, that, I don't have the numbers on that, uh, for a lot of people to be able to live downtown. But I didn't, haven't contacted him yet to know more about that. Um, but economic development and a stronger middle class is really the way to go. Um, if I tried to talk more, I feel like I would just be dawdling. So that's the end of me.
Mimi Smith Dvorak, please, ninety seconds.
Well, I've watched the, uh, comprehensive plan process a few times now and, um, I'm not all that impressed with it. Um, I know it's an outgrowth of what we had to do. The state required us to do it for the Growth Management Act. Um, so to me it seems to be almost a futile exercise because yeah, we changed some zoning, we do a few things, but we can't look to the government for economic growth. Um, uh, government employees don't understand economic growth because they just raise taxes and grow business, uh, grow government instead of business. I mean, that's what they do. You know, look how much bigger our city budget is now than it was after the elastic, uh, comprehensive plan. You know, all that happens is we spend more money and we have more people and everyone makes more money in the government. Um, I, you know, the, it's just, it's a nice exercise, but it doesn't answer the things that I think we need, which is, who are we? Who do we want to be and how do we want to market ourselves? You know, how do we create a dynamic community that attracts people? Um, I'll leave it at that.
Kate Dexter, you now have ninety seconds.
All right. Well, this is a good question and I think a hard one because, um, I don't think we can have one without the others. Um, I think they all need to be there, but that's not the question. The question is which one do we think is the most important? Um, and I think it depends on, I'm, I'm thinking about my answer and I'm going to articulate how I'm thinking about it so that I maybe get to the answer that I want to, that I think is best. I think there's, from the bottom down, do we have a solid foundation? I think that's really important. So climate resiliency, um, appropriate land use, good, good plans for our utilities, um, conservation, um, that sort of, and housing, those are the bases. We need all those things in order for the other things to happen. Um, and thinking about a question we got from someone who's, um, joined us this evening about reactive versus proactive, if we're going to think from the top down, what, what can be the driver that helps support everything? I would agree with Ralph that, um, economic development is at the tip of the spear. Um, if we think about how we go forward, but I think it's hard to say that's the most important because you can have that. But if you don't have the other solid foundational pieces, um, then you don't have a very well functioning, um, organization.
Okay. All right. Uh, position one candidates, you now have ninety seconds and the first is James Taylor. And James, since you, can you see the timer yet?
Uh, no, I can't, but I got a stopwatch going on my, uh, computer.
Okay. Cause I can raise my finger when you have one minute left. And then when I raise my, you'll have fifteen seconds left. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And so I'm going to start off with land use and only because no one else is going to talk about it. I'm on the, I'm vice president of Port Angeles Business Association. Um, when I, uh, go out and talk to the different, uh, mill owners and the different manufacturers in the community, they say they've never seen anyone from the city or city council there. Um, when you go to housing for all, you never see anybody from city council there. But on the land use issue, uh, the city wants to rezone. If you, if you've gone and listened to the comprehensive plan and listened to Ben, they want to rezone the community to all high density. And high density means that in these nice little neighborhoods we have, your neighbor can put up a forty foot, forty-five foot tall building. Um, I think most of us really enjoy our views of the mountains. We enjoy our views of the water and as soon as you go and put in a forty-five foot tall building next door, because that's what the zoning is going towards, um, then all of a sudden the value of your property goes down. Um, and I really think the, the city is out of touch with what our community is and looks like. We got some great neighborhoods. The houses are old, they're funky, they're attractive and they're all built with wood.
Latricia Suggs, you now have ninety seconds.
Thank you. And this is a really good question and it is a hard question to answer. Um, gonna have to agree with Kate. A, a lot of these are the backbone of a city. But, um, again, the question is which do I think is most critical? Um, I'm gonna have to, uh, I think this, these are one of the few times James and I agree. I do think land use is the driving force behind everything, or not everything. That and, and, and climate, um, because land use, you're identifying, uh, through, um, the plan on how you, how you envision your city, where, where, where you want it to see it grow, you know? Where is, where is your residential neighborhoods? We're identifying more commercial neighborhoods. Um, more, uh, creating a more walkable neighborhood and, and stuff. And, and you do that through identifying zones within your, your neighborhood. Um, and that's going to drive what happens in, in those different neighborhoods. So I think the land use i- i- is kind of one of the driving forces. But along with that land use, and this is tugs at my heart all the time, is that climate, the, the watershed in which we live in. If we don't have a healthy watershed, so that land use and climate go hand in hand. If we don't have a healthy watershed, we do not have a healthy community. So, um, regardless of what we think, what zone should be, land use i- i- is a driving force for me that I think is important.
Gilbert Hall, you now have ninety seconds.
You'll need to unmute. Find the unmute. Well, thank you. Um, yeah, I have to agree with several people. They all are intertwined together. Um, you have to have the ability to, to manage all of them and, uh, and coordinate your time to spend getting each one. If I had to pick one, it would have to be economic development, just for the mere fact that without income, you can't have the other ones. So if you have a small, if everybody's, the community is making money, then it's going to start to grow, which would then turn that if you have no, um, if you have problems with land use and utilities and all that, those can be remedied through the, the economic development. As long as we're backing the small businesses that are helping us grow, we, we depend on them to keep everything coming into this town. Um, housing is important, recreation is important. Those are all to help the people. And that's what we kind of need to do as well with those. But those people depend on the economic development of those small businesses. There's so many friends of mine that are in town that own businesses that I think, um, depend on the council helping us get to that point, if that kind of makes sense. So I would love to tie all of them together, but you wanted just one, so I would pick economic development.
The next question addresses economics. The local economic outlook appears uncertain with state and federal funding cuts, new or potential tariffs, layoffs at the government entities, as well as decreases in Canadian tourism and more. How do you think the city of Port Angeles should approach this economic uncertainty? Position one candidates, Gilbert Hall, you have ninety seconds.
Give me the unmute button. There it is.
Got it.
You got me?
I got you.
Well, I believe we need to be self-sufficient in that regards. We need to be, we, that goes right back to the last question of economic development. If the count is self-sufficient as the, the plot of land that we spoke of earlier, if, if that hotel is there, whatever, that's going to bring people in. We're not just talking about those empty buildings. So you talk about the Rhino gas station on Albert and first that thing's been, it, you, that's what you see when you first come into town. Although it's not the core, you're still seeing all that development not being done. There's so many different buildings that are not, we should be getting back to stuff as, say those buildings are having a, uh, give them a timeline of five years to either revamp the, the building or we take it over as a city and, and sell it. And that's how we pay for how, how that would happen. If, we just have to make this town more inviting so we become more self-sufficient to protect ourselves from something that happens. If we're always relying on grants from other places, those might not happen. So we have to, if, if we need them done, we have to figure a way in-house to, um, make those things happen. It shouldn't be as hard as it seems to be, but I don't know, cause I haven't been in that position. And I, I hope to be there and, and tackle that.
Latisha, Latricia Suggs, you now have ninety seconds.
Thank you for that question. I think that's a question on a lot of people's minds. How do we move forward with uncertainty and chaos that's happening? Um, that's trickling down, starting at the federal government and then it trickles down to the state. Well, I think one of the things that we've done as a council is we do have plans. Um, we have budgets and we do rely on grants. Um, and we bring the, those funds to our community, um, to meet the needs, infrastructure needs, roads, um, utilities, um, wastewater, um, water, we, we need those. However, you know, as the, the future may not be as rosy now. And, and I think the way that we do it is, um, as we move forward, we will continue to rely on the grants that we have. But that, that's when you look at, okay, well, here in our capital facilities plan, we planned on doing this, but the budgets, we're not going to meet it with the budget. So you're just going to have to most likely take that project and move it into the next year. If you can't fund it, then we move it into the next year. It just means that we have a delayed, um, maintenance program going on with our capital facilities, transportation improvement plan. We have a lot of unfunded projects in there, so we have to prioritize and prioritize those high, um, projects that really need to be done.
James Taylor, you now have ninety seconds.
So, um, I was on a mill tour recently that the county organized and no one from the city and no one from city council. There was a, a minor city employee there, but neither the city council nor Calvin nor Nathan was, was at this mill tour. Um, if you go out to Herman Brothers, to PA Hardwood, to Interfor, those are four hundred jobs paying living wages with insurance. If you go to the port, you will, the port meetings, you will never see anyone from city council or from Nathan or Calvin at that meeting. Um, the port is really working very hard to get a client into McKinley Paper. Um, it's going to be a, a, a carbon steel plant, not a carbon steel plant, but it's going to supply carbon to, uh, Japan via, um, uh, the processing of wood waste. Um, if you go to any activity, housing, um, the county housing, you'll never see anybody from city council. I think we need to be engaged. We need to know who our clients are. When I was talking to PA Hardwood, he said he had never seen anyone from the city at his, at his facility. Yet he's eighty jobs or ninety jobs. We have these employers already here and we have no relationships with them. Um, I will be at the businesses. I, I will, I will be there.
Position four candidates, Mimi Smith Dvorak, you have ninety seconds.
Can you repeat the question for me?
Certainly. The local economic outlook appears uncertain with state and federal funding cuts, new or potential tariffs, layoffs at the government entities, as well as decreases in Canadian tourism and more. How do you think the city of Port Angeles should approach this economic uncertainty?
Well, being self-employed, um, I've had years where my income has dropped by two thirds. And that's always challenging. Um, the first thing I do is I tighten my belt. I go through every single expenditure I have and I cut back. And I, and I cut out things that aren't unnecessary. Right now I look at the budget for the city. I look at the consent agenda and I see that we're, we're buying police cars that only have sixty thousand miles, which is a new car for me. Um, I know that around the country, uh, our own troopers keep their cars for a hundred thousand miles. The city of Detroit keeps theirs for a hundred and eighty thousand miles. They drive them to the ground. There's no advantage to selling a car early. Um, you know, just recently on the agenda, which was thankfully pulled, was that they were trying to replace a, uh, a Kubota tractor that only had fifteen hundred hours. You know, it was twenty years old, but Kubota tractors can, can go up to ten thousand hours. There's no reason to spend forty-eight thousand dollars just because it looks old. We need to maintain our stuff and we need to look at our budget seriously, you know, and, and audit ourselves. Like, you know, what, how are we wasting money? Um, that's the first thing we have to do. Um, you know, and then of course, the other thing I will constantly harp on is we really have to help our businesses, all of them. We can't just say, oh, you know, that other group will help them. We have to help them.
Kate Dexter, you now have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Um, so I think there are a few things. One, uh, we have an example from the past, the not so distant past, when, uh, the mill shut down the first time and the city, um, was facing a million dollar revenue loss. Um, which in the scheme of our budget is not super significant, but was enough for them to make some pretty significant cuts, some of which we've been able to bring back things like code enforcement, um, that sort of thing. But I think, um, one of the things that I'm hoping we will do, um, in conjunction with the budget process is a prioritization process. And we've done that once before when we were looking at the mill shutting again, or just, hey, we learned the hard way. Let's be more strategic. Um, so that we don't just make across the board cuts, but that we have thoughtful conversation and, and budget or, um, yes, priority areas that the council identifies as a whole and votes on, um, to decide how we're going to peel back if we need to. Um, so I think we need to be doing that because I think the, there is a very real, um, it's a very realistic thing that we're going to not have as much money as we were hoping, um, in the form of, uh, federal and state funds. Um, and I think we're going to have to work together with our community. I think we've heard some good answers here tonight, things that we could, um, elaborate on a little bit more. And, um, and I think just because we're not at public meetings, doesn't mean we don't have relationships and aren't meeting with those organizations. I, I just wanted to, James mentioned that and, and I think we do, we're not at everything. It's true. But we do have, um, some relationships that I think are valuable and will be important in this, as we go through this. And sorry, I've used up my time.
These next questions address leadership and governance.
Ralph didn't go yet.
Oh, Ralph Davison, so sorry, you're next. You have ninety seconds.
So this city, what some of the main things that like got industry started here were mills. So we're addressing ways in which to get someone into the mill. And that's like for the McKinley Mill, for example. But that, a- agencies we're looking at like that would be buying in most likely from another state or even possibly another country when the trees are here. I'm not trying to say to, that I'm pro, like, I don't want us to start clear cutting as a last resort kind of thing. I'm saying we can figure out ways to more effectively use resources at hand that when we're already selling logging rights away, instead of selling it to an entity in Oregon, we could be asking the locals going, hey, we're looking at smaller segments. Your business, like we have a few businesses on either side of just outside the, um, city borders, um, that specialize in wood cutting art. So if we're selling trees to them or someone else that can utilize that and sell it a couple of times over and then have that be an export, that would be a way in order to generate more sales tax for us, where we're a producer and we're sending stuff out rather than relying on money to come in from government entities.
These next questions address leadership and governance. The question is, to what extent are elected officials expected to take public comments into consideration when making decisions? And how should they balance it with other sources of information? Position four, Mimi Smith DeVorec, please, ninety seconds.
Uh-oh. Um, public comment is incredibly important. And I realize that we limited our public comment to what was on the agenda after having some Zoom bombers. Uh, but just like the nineteen seventy thing with streakers, that's passed. Um, the reason that we had city comment at the first comment period was that so people could express things that could then be discussed at the council. So we're not being listened to. We, people have to wait until the very end to, to say what they want and they've waited for the whole time and then the council goes home. That's not the way it's supposed to be. Uh, the city council should be responding to people. They should be listening to people. And it's just like the most recent thing, you know, the, the orphan sidewalks, which is, you know, some poor guy's trying to build something, but he's got to put a sidewalk in. We don't have an in lieu of position, you know, we can't, you know, take the money and, and put it in a fund. We have to make him put a sidewalk where it makes no sense at all. This was brought up for many meetings, like, you know, I can go back and look at all the things and cite it. I mean, I think it was brought up for at least eight meetings prior to it actually coming to a head. We need to be responsive and being responsive means listening to the people. And that's something that our council has gotten out of the habit of during the whole COVID thing. We need to go back to being responsive and listening to, and not hurting people.
Kate Dexter, you now have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Um. So public comment is, I think, very important and we do, um, to Mimi's point, um, the first public comment period is for items on the agenda that evening. And then the second public comment period is for any, um, topic. And, um, we generally don't, unless it's a very urgent, timely issue, put things on as a late item for discussion, um, which is how we would put it on the agenda. So, um, so I think we still give the opportunity for people to speak to things we're going to be discussing that evening and then, um, have the, the second public comment for later. I think in terms of there, there's two different parts of this question I, I will try to answer in forty five seconds. Um. I think public comment is very important and I think, um, it may not feel that way to people, but I certainly can speak for myself, but, um, particularly on big issues, um, I have listened to people and thought, well, I maybe I'm thinking this way. And then I hear really compelling public comment and I, and it changes how I approach an issue. Um, I can't articulate that necessarily, or I don't necessarily, and maybe I should do a better job of that. Um, I also think that one of the things we did do really well before COVID that we haven't, and I'm, uh, will commit to doing that if I'm reelected um, and could start before that. Um, we used to do more public outreach and give people an opportunity to, to come and visit with us at the farmer's market, at the library, at the high school. Um, and I think we need to get back to doing that.
Ralph Davidson, you now have ninety seconds.
So. An idea I've already had going around in my head, I like the idea of, but I haven't announced it much yet to get much critique is a City of Port Angeles app. We already all have phones. We're already on them all the time. And if, when it comes to engaging in local politics, we have to, we have to like fight to get the attention of the voters. The people such as those that are present will dedicate themselves, but I think it's worth considering having a, a quick little, like, having the minutes being posted to a medium like that immediately, having polls on various things where it goes, in order to log into this app, you are a registered voter in Port Angeles. So there is gauging the balance between different agencies we're working with on a given subject and listening to public comment. But if we can get more people engaged for that public comment, I think that gives us a better view on what we're working with, what the people need, what the people want, what they're concerned about. It all ended there.
Position one. Position one, Gilbert Hall, you have ninety seconds. Unmute.
Thank you. That is one reason why I decided to run was the public comments. I believe that the public, uh, won't come and speak because it almost gives the impression that you're not being heard. And I also want to add to Mimi's thing from the other day on the city council meeting, the, the distortion of the viewing, when you're viewing it live, it's just, it's almost you can't even understand people. And we don't know who's talking. I mean, let's say Drew or somebody wants to, Drew is raising his hand like in kindergarten or something like that. We, if we had some sort of light, like you need a, who's talking and what, what, what candidate or what's council member's talking? Which one has a view? Which one voted yay? Which one voted nay? I almost don't even know which one was that. So you, you almost just don't want to go and comment because you just feel like it's not being heard. So that was what I asked the city manager when I went in and talked to him. I was like, how are these comments being addressed? Because if you, if you publicly told people how they're being addressed or say, heck, you're not going to get your thing done, you know, at least you had an answer to it. But right now it feels like there's no answer or there's no resolution to that. Um, it seems like in the last several meetings, it's been addressed way better, but I'm thinking that's due to the election year, but I'm not potentially saying that, but that's kind of how it is. That's all I have time for.
Latricia Suggs, you have ninety seconds.
Well, public comment is very important through, um, in any, uh, um, elected position. Um, I, I think since the pandemic, we've, um, I know Kate mentioned, um, going out and doing um, public events, but I think that we've expanded our public comment by the Zoom hybrid meetings. Um, where people are able to, um, participate in city council, um, from their, from their living room or from their kitchen while they're cooking dinner and taking care of their kids. And they're able to make public comment, um, at the beginning and at the end. But there's also other ways to make public comments. You can always call and leave voicemails on our city phone numbers. You can also send emails to us too. And we do get a lot of emails and we do read those emails. We may not be able to respond to every single email, but we, we hear those and we read them and we take those into consideration just as we hear a public comment, um, at city council. We may not agree with all the, the public comment that's being presented, or maybe some of those public comments that, the comments that have been made, we've already discussed those, um, in, uh, in another setting, um, you know, prior to or, um, staff has communicated that stuff to us. Um, so public comment is important and it's vit- vitally helpful as elected leaders. Thank you.
James Taylor, you have ninety seconds.
Well, I've been one of these public commentators on a regular basis. Um, I think the one that most striking to me was when, uh, city council decided to change the type one S T R to be a more restrictive format, kind of at the eleventh and a half hour. And it really only impacted five people. And I sat up there and I listened to these folks that had these types of units beg the city council. I mean, that, that one couple with the three kids, they were begging. Um, they didn't have the finances to change their S T R type. And the city really didn't have any business changing the S T R type at, you know, right at the start of tourist season. Um, I don't see how, um, this impacts the city. Why, why, why the city felt it was so important to punish these people for attempting to make a living. I think, you know, if you're going to make a living, the city should be sitting there helping everyone make a living rather than, you know, punishing people. I mean, that was just outrageous. Um, as far as writing letters to, to the city council, I don't know how many I've written to you. And I've never gotten a response, you know, not one. And so it seems kind of awkward that, oh, you read them, but how, how does the public know? How does the public know that these are being read? You know, if I'm going to read one, I'm going to respond and say, hey, I agree, I disagree. Here's option A, here's option B, but I'm not going to sit here and give you the silent treatment.
The next question is what is the one area you think the Port Angeles city government is doing well? And what is one area you think needs the biggest improvement? Position one, Latricia Suggs, you now have ninety seconds.
Oh, thinking on my feet here. Well, I think one thing that the city is doing really well in, and again, goes back to my, my heart here is um, protecting and focusing on climate resiliency in our community. Making, um, creating a more healthier, um, environment for those of us that live here. We've invested in electric vehicle charging stations. We've also invested in, um, we've had council members, um, on the Clon County Transit that have advocated for more walkable, um, city by creating, um, the, the no fees, um, um, for public transit. Um, so people don't have to pay that dollar or whatever it is to, to ride the city bus. But I think that we've done a really great job in creating a place that we are looking at all modes of transportation, bicycle, walking, um, creating a livable space. I mean, I, I know a lot of young kids that, um, could drive, but they choose not to. They, they opt to ride their electric bikes or they use the transit a lot. And I think that's really great. One thing that we, we can do well, um, or better, and I think we're working on it is, um, our, our permits. Um, we are, um, establishing, um, a, a new enterprise software system and it's going to be rolled out here pretty soon. And I think that will make a lot, um, of improvements in our permitting department.
James Taylor, you now have thirty seconds.
Okay, I want to say something that's going to offend my, uh, kind of pro-business friends and property rights friends in that I really think that the city charging the, uh, electric and utility charges to the unoccupied houses, which the comprehensive plan said there were eight hundred and forty-three of them. Um, is, you know, it's effectively a tax on vacated and dilapidated lands. But, um, I think that actually economically benefits the community. Um, I don't think it should be done for, uh, vacant lands. Um, because that is our future building stock and you can't build the whole thing out at one time. Um, one of the things the city seems to have a problem with beyond communication with, with the citizenry is I don't feel that the city's very organized. Um, if you go reckon back to the, uh, S T R crisis of, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, that was not planned out. It wasn't thought out. It wasn't like ran like a real project. So we jumped from idea one to idea seven. So when it came before planning, they came and said, oh, here's the idea now. Ask us our opinion and then you go to city council on the following Tuesday and the idea changed yet again. Um, there has to be some kind of education on how to run the city and I don't think it's being done.
Position four candidates, Kate Dexter, you now have ninety seconds.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I messed up again. Gilbert Hall. You now have ninety seconds.
Is, all right, thanks, sir. Thank you there. Um, I think we're doing really well in the fire department. The fire department has been just amazing. Everything that they've attacked and that I feel so secure with that fire department and the paramedics and everything that happens in this town. Uh, my mother's eighty-three years old. She's, she's actually called on nine-one-one a couple of times and, and, and the service friendliness, everything that happens, all the fires I've seen, they're quickly, uh, taking care of the fire department. To me, by far is one of the, a, a success story in this town. Um, well, what I think the biggest failure is, I think we should do more for the people in a sense of everything from permits to, to how the, the town looks. Because the permitting factor, it takes a while. There's so many loops and everything, but we control that as a, as a s- city manager. Um, how can we make it easier for people to build? I, I've built shops and houses and everything and I mean, something as simple as, as, as two entrances from one plot of land, you have to fix a, a curb. I mean, is that really, really necessary in the, in the scheme of things for? I mean, yes, it had a great vision of, yeah, if we just, everybody did that, but that would probably take centuries to fix. I mean, it would take a long time. So to me, it's the, we just need to treat our people that are living here better.
Now we'll go to position four candidates. Kate Dexter, you're up first. You have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Um. I would love to talk about a lot of different things because I think we're doing a lot of things well. And I think there are, um, a few areas that we certainly could improve. Um, but, um, since I was asked to pick one of each, um, I'm going to dovetail off what Gilbert said. Um, I feel really good about, um, specifically, I want to call out Operation Shielding Hope, which is the additional component of the community paramedicine program through P A Fire that we granted our opioid settlement funds to. And it allows for co-response, um, for opioid overdoses during the time that the community paramedics are on duty. And when I started, uh, when I ran in twenty seventeen and up until, I think, twenty twenty-two or mid twenty twenty-three, we were, um, jockeying between first, second and third place with King County and Grace Harbor County for opioid overdoses and overdose deaths. And we're now down to, to fifteen, um, in the county, I mean, in the state, uh, Clon County. And that's a big part, I think, because of our, um, program with community paramedics. So that's one I want to highlight. Um, where we could use some improvement, um, I hear a lot, I think the most I hear from community members, um, particularly via email, is code enforcement complaints. Um, and so if I had to pick an area that I was going to focus on spending some money on, um, I would like to get more firefighters, but I also, um, think that we could, we have some hamstrings in code enforcement that we need to address, um, and I would like to focus a little bit on that.
Ralph Davidson, you're next, ninety seconds.
So back to the one hundred and fifty-seven million in the budget. I think that is an awesome number. That is inconceivable. I don't think I would ever own that much in my life. So good job on getting that much in. Um, but then the con, I could be saying some of the same thing, um, because of how we were talking about communication and expenditures, but I actually want to use this opportunity to bring up a different topic in that, in talking with the the police department, they only have three to four officers on staff for dispatch at a given moment in time. Across twenty thousand people, that's one officer per five thousand. I mean, obviously we don't have huge outbreaks of issues at a given moment in time, but if there is an issue, don't just send one officer there. That's two at minimum. And we don't, we have more than four given areas of town too. It just, it, it kind of ties in with following up on the success on mitigating overdoses. You also can mitigate unruly behavior and make the public feel more safe if you just have more presence. And also more, more officers on staff lessens the amount of overtime each individual has to commit to. So they have better mental health and, I mean, you want. And, I mean, you want the people that are going to be there when you're having your worst day in top condition.
Mimi Smith Dvorak, please, your next ninety seconds.
Yep, well, I would love to tell the city unbelievable kudos over the kids' day, bringing that back. Parks and Rec is doing a great job with that. Now, I would like to see, you know, us go back to having classes and summer day camps by the city, and we had, used to have after-school activities. Uh, maybe we'll get there. Uh, the fire and police are unbelievable in this town, and I say this because my background, part of my background of years ago was as a, I worked for Berkeley Police. And I think our fire and our police are doing a fantastic job. Uh, they have a hard job and, um, you know, but they do very well with, with, you know, they're just, they're very even. Um, I think the city did a really great job with allowing more ADUs in our community, and I think that was great. Um, you know what I'd like to see is, I'd really like the city to do more city-run events. And I'd also like to see quarterly town hall meetings so we could actually get some answers from, from our city. And just, you know, it's, it doesn't hurt. Um, you know, the more feedback, the better, the more people feel involved, the better. Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, you know, I think we're, the city tries, um, but we just have to fine tune it.
All right, one last question. The next question addresses housing. What can the city council do to address unhoused community members? Kate Dexter, position four candidate, you have nine ninety seconds.
Thank you. Um, one of the things that we have done, um, is support projects like Peninsula Behavioral Health's Donview Court and their new thirty-six units, uh, permanent supportive housing apartment complex that they're building. I think that's, um, those are two really important projects, um, that will help the unhoused population. Um, we had some discussion recently and I think are going to revisit, um, support for, um, the, um, project, I can't say the name of it right now, but, um, that four PA is working on. I think anything that we can do to build opportunities for shelter that trans, shelter and housing. Um, we're working on an affordable housing pilot project. I don't know exactly where the target will be. I imagine some people, it will be, um, people who can afford to pay some rent. Um, and I think working with our nonprofit partners who are doing the work, um, is going to continue to be important. Um, the more housing we can build, the more opportunities there are for people. And I think, um, the more we can support, uh, permanent supportive housing, the better off we're going to be. Getting people into stable shelter is a step, stable housing is more important, um, and allows people to make the changes they need, um, to improve their lives and then be able to move on, um, into other housing. So, um, I guess I have four seconds and I'll stop.
Ralph Davison, you now have ninety seconds.
So the unhoused also includes not just the people we see, but the people that are living in cars that do have jobs. So lowering the barriers to entry into getting into a house would be one of the best things to do. Obviously, something that is inclined to come up with, talking with the online community, would be if there was something created by the city. But you hear a lot of bad stories about the, um, repealing code that makes it to where you add extra barriers into creating affordable housing would be the way to go, I think. And we also have to keep in mind that affordable has a definition within our own laws. If it has to be at eighty percent of whatever the median income for the given area would be. So I don't know that, like, that's something I need to ask more questions about to comprehend more fully, but code revision would be my answer. Um, and otherwise, for what other, what we generally think of for unhoused population, I just have to agree completely with Kate Dexter on working with agencies that help with those that are in more difficult situations.
Mimi Smith Dvorak, ninety seconds, please.
Okay, well, since, one of the big problems we have is RVs are parked all over town. And what many communities have done is they've established safe RV parking areas and safe camping sites. This makes them centralized with sanitation services, shower facilities, and trash pickup. It's better one spot than instead of everywhere. But the one thing that people forget about homelessness is nothing should be free. Um, being free, uh, it actually tears down whatever human pride people have. Now, not all homeless people are the same. We have different classes of homeless. I mean, some homeless are chronic and some people are just living in their cars temporarily. Some people, you know, have, you know, mental issues that they need to deal with. And other people, you know, are there just because, you know, they got kicked out of their house or it's domestic violence. So I think addressing what the different needs are for each of those different groups is something that is more than just saying, hey, go to Serenity House. I think, um, we need to do, you know, we need to actually get involved as a community and say, you know, how do we help these people? And some people are fine, they just lost their driver's licenses and they don't have any way to get them back, and they don't have the wherewithal of how to do all this stuff. You know, I think that, you know, we need to look at homelessness more compassionately, but not giving free things. You know, even a free meal, you know, I, if I go to someone's house for dinner, I at least help clean off the, the, the tables. You know, if you're going to say, give out away free needles, bring me four old needles, which is what some communities are doing, and it works.
Latricia Suggs, you have ninety seconds.
Um, what can the city do? Well, the, the city is, continues to do, um, and work with a lot of our community partners, um, Peninsula Behavioral Housing, um, Peninsula Housing Association, Habitat for Humanity. Um, there, there's many things that are being done. Also, our rediscovery program, the Community Paramed Program. There's a lot of things that the city is doing and working with partners, um, to help find grants to fund these programs, to keep these programs going. And I think one thing that we need to look at, um, as we've mentioned before, we, we've got some economic uncertainty at the federal and state level. I think one of the things that is city council, we need to make sure that we take a hard look at our rediscovery program and that we have solid funding to continue these programs indefinitely. I think they're vital for our community members. A lot of times people are just, they're in the most vulnerable state, a- and it's not a crime to be unhoused. But wraparound services are going to be vital and treating them with respect, just as we've done with Operation Hope. Um, they've found that more people are willing to accept help when you greet them with kindness and understanding and a helping hand.
James Taylor, you have ninety seconds.
I think when we only focused on the thirty or sixty percent AMI, we're missing out on the fact that we have a housing shortage in general. I think that if we allow to build single-family hoses, houses, which is what the market demands, um, that will have people move out of the smaller houses. Um, we also have, you know, just on my street, um, there's, there's ten empty small houses, um, that could be brought into the mix. Um, but also, you know, some of these people that don't have any income is because they don't have any training because, because they didn't get it in school, and they never got put into trades. And so it's, it's an economic problem in that these people don't have good jobs and aren't working. And then that then limits your pool of the unhoused to the people that are chronic with other issues. I think anybody that has a job should be able to get into an apartment, but we don't build apartments here. Um, we haven't built apartments here for fifteen years. And I don't think putting up forty-five-story buildings in neighborhoods is your answer either. Um, you know, I'm rather weak on this point because I, I see it as it's an economic problem that's caused by a poor economy as opposed to, oh, this person is unhoused, living on the street and has no options at all.
Thank you. Um, Gilbert Hall, you have ninety seconds.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, I believe with what Mimi said, there's, there's two classes. You have unhomed and then you have homeless. And, and the two are being conjoined together, but they're not the same thing. I mean, you have unhomed people are people that are, come on hard times or, or can't afford this because, but they're trying and everything. The homeless that live on Tom Water Truck Route, they want to live by that river. And that's where we have to support for PA in a sense that they're actually going in there and talking with the people, figuring out what they need to try to get better. But those people that live under the bridge, as I grew up in, those are the same ones who have the RV on Marine Drive down by the Marina. I don't know if those are actually unhomed people or if they are choosing to be homeless. A lot of them take in government subsidies, and if they get a job, then they lose those subsidies. So for the unhomed, sometimes it's just as easy as an address. If the city could provide PO boxes, they could, you know, have a, a PO box that they could get their information in, because when you try for a job, if you don't have an address, it is so hard to get a job. But if, if you get some sort of subsidy that we could just have PO boxes for the unhomed, not the homeless, and it, it could probably help them out a lot.
Thank you, everyone, for listening to this focused policy discussion tonight. And thank you, candidates, for your thoughtful answers. These candidates have taken the bold act of running. Yeah? Oh, I forgot your closing statement. Okay, so now each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. Position one, Latricia Suggs, you will have one minute for a closing statement.
All right, well, let's get going here. Um, I, I think the next four years is going to require, um, stability and focus to maintain, um, our city budget and address it where we do have shortfalls and come and work with staff to make sure that we are making adjustments as needed. Um, we need to, um, continue to expand our, um, affordable or attainable housing, continue to protect our city's sole water source, continue to, um, also implement the plans that we have in place. And, and we do ask for staff to have plans, like replacement plans for vehicles. It's just not willy-nilly. It's a plan that's in place that they brought forward and we're implementing it. But as we move forward, we will make adjustments where needed. But we do need focus and stability for the next four years as we move forward and are, um, handling and addressing the chaos and the funding challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. James Taylor, you have one minute.
Okay, so in the last four years, uh, city expenses have gone up thirty-four percent. City employment has gone eighteen, up eighteen percent, yet the city hasn't grown. Uh, the city has a lot of bloat. And with that bloat, it doesn't actually get anything done, it just is bloat. Um, you know, we talked about the officer downtown, um, he's not there anymore. Um, but, you know, we need to get our spending under control because it is going to be tough times for the city. And the answer of going and raising our utility rates or raising our sales tax or raising our property tax, those aren't the right answers. The answers are, you need to be, the city needs to be responsible with the monies they receive. Um, thank you.
Gilbert Hall, you have one minute.
Okay, thanks. Once elected, my plan is to give a hundred percent of my time and everything to the people of Port Angeles. I want to make the town more welcoming and bring the visitors, we support this town, including small business. I promise I will work in a nonpartisan fashion and deliver true results to the community of Port Angeles. I just know I can tackle anything that's thrown our way and we have a good result from, sorry, I was just kind of like, Ralph, you have a memory lapse there. We're not, we're not politicians yet, we hope. But anyways, I just hope for your vote because I have a vision and I know I could do it anyways.
Thank you.
Gilbert Hall.
Position four, Kate Dexter, you now have one minute.
Thank you. Um, over the last seven and a half years, I've been dedicated to listening to constituents and providing calm, level-headed leadership during difficult community issues. I've worked to help pass legislation in the best interest of the community as a whole. As mayor, I helped Port Angeles weather the pandemic and voted to provide pandemic relief to businesses, individuals, and nonprofits. Coming out of the pandemic, I've provided a proponent, I've been a proponent of increasing childcare, developing meaningful solutions to the housing crisis, supporting first responders, including the Coast Guard, and working to support local agencies responding to the opioid crisis. Both as mayor and in my personal life, I believe that working collaboratively strengthens our community. I've helped strengthen partnerships with local tribal governments, worked with partners at the county, and served as a member of nonprofit boards. I believe that the city of Port Angeles deserves a council that actively supports collaborative partnerships and can provide thoughtful and steady leadership, particularly as we navigate the almost daily changes at the federal level. Especially now our community needs leaders who are interested and committed to building relationships with one another. We need to work together to ensure that no one is left behind and that we continue working toward a resilient Port Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mimi Smith Dvorak, ninety seconds.
Well, we live here, um, one road in, one road out. We've got water on one side and mountains on the other. If there is a major fire, an earthquake, a tsunami, or any other catastrophe, we better be able to work as a community. And we need to remember that we are a community. And I think everything that I would do would be to foster this sense of community. Everybody needs to be involved, you know, from teenagers, especially the more disenfranchised ones, to, um, the elderly, of which I'm one, uh, to everybody in between, you know, we need to know how to support our, our people here. And I think that's the most important thing that city government can do. Um, you know, I think that we aren't doing enough, and the city's gotten a little too hoity-toity about being, oh, they're our, our government, but they need to be part of us as well. Thank you.
Ralph Davison, you have one minute.
So, both of the other candidates running for this position have been making contributions to the city. If I'm elected, you will not lose them as a resource. They're here to help. We're not opponents in this debate. We're all here because we are genuinely after the betterment of Port Angeles. We're on the same team. We're going to disagree on things, but if I get elected, I expect to hear from both of you. Mimi, you own, uh, you are a writer. Tell me, write articles about me, make me look bad if I do anything dumb. And Kate Dexter, I know that you are involved with the college and a few other things that you have mentioned today. So Port Angeles still has you as resources. I stepped up and out of nowhere, so I'm something new. If that's what the voters want, is something new, I'm here, I'm ready to help, and I'll do what I can.
Thank you, candidates. This has been a great discussion and, uh, thank you for your answers. Like I said earlier, these candidates have taken the bold act of running. Now it's our turn to do the voting. If you are not yet registered to vote, we encourage you to go to votewat.gov and get yourself registered, either online or by mail through July eighteenth or in person at your county. or in person at your county courthouse until August fifth. If you're not sure about your voter registration status, you can check it on the votewa.gov website. If you want more information on the candidates, we encourage you to visit votefouroneone.org to read the candidates' written responses to a variety of questions. Ballots will be mailed out on July eighteenth and can be mailed in or placed in one of the many drop boxes throughout the county. Election Day is August fifth, so please be sure to fill out your ballot and get it to a drop box or put it in the mail. We are asking everyone to vote, then talk to everyone you know about voting. Make sure everyone has a plan to get their ballot in. This forum has been recorded and a link to it will be posted on both the website for the League of Women Voter Clallam County in a few days. Once we have it posted, be sure to spread the word among your friends who are unable to join us live so that everyone can be an informed voter. Thank you again to our candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Good evening, everyone.